Got all of her horn.
Good evening. Welcome tonight on this very special last day of school. I don't know if any of y'all noticed. I call this regular meeting the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order it. It's actually 7:03 PM on June 6, 2013. Please join me in standing as James Goode leads the board's opening prayer.
Our Father, we're so thankful for this beautiful day you blessed all of us with, and especially for this opportunity that we have this evening to be here at this board meeting. Father, we're especially mindful of all of our students as they have completed this school year, and we especially ask that you will be with them during this summer, that all of their activities and their travels and new experiences, that you will grant them safety throughout all of their functions. And Father, we're thankful this evening that we have this opportunity to say thank you to a number of very special guests, people that go above and beyond in our school district, and that we have this opportunity to say thank you to them. Father, as we discuss the business of this school district, help us with insight and understanding, and especially that we will always be respectful and courteous to each other in our deliberation and discussion. And Father, we thank you always for giving us the opportunity to be able to influence the lives of all of our students, and may they always understand how much we care about their academic success. Father, we thank you not only for this day but every day that you bless us with, and this is our prayer in your son's name. Amen.
Please remain standing as Richard Fleming leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our goal of high achievement for all students. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. For the record, all the board members are here. We do constitute a corps and can conduct business on behalf of the district. That being said, we'll start with Agenda Item Number Two, Recognition of Special Guests and Announcements. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Members of the board and audience tonight, you know, it's kind of fitting that we have the first recognition's MVPs, and we also have athletics and arts here tonight, and we have a standing room crowd, you know, a standing room only, which in any game or any performance, we always love it when there's a big crowd. So thank you for being here tonight. Since we are talking about MVPs, I thought we would kind of mix metaphors here. We talk a little bit athletics and a little bit of arts. So I thought I'd use a quote from a musician, and he's a pretty famous musician. You've probably heard of him called Usher. And Usher said, "Teamwork makes the dream work." Teamwork makes the dream work. And tonight, we're here to celebrate our MVPs that help make the dream work. They're our team. I also want to tell you a little thing about how I kind of think about these people because they work so tirelessly behind the scenes that they don't always get the credit. So you know when you go to a great movie, and it's a really great movie, but at the end, when they roll the credits, these are the people that are doing that work, okay? These are the people behind the scenes making it happen, our MVPs. Tonight's MVPs were nominated by their fellow teammates for things like exhibiting innovation, service, leadership, cooperation, and most importantly, teamwork. So MVPs, when your supervisor comes to introduce you tonight, would you please join Ms. Klein and I in the front? We'd invite friends and family of the MVP to please stand while you're being recognized, so that we can truly honor our behind-the-scenes players for their great teamwork, and we are recognizing them tonight as MVPs. Ms. Klein, would you please join me in the front?
Mrs. Klein, Dr. Burns, members of the board, I'm Kathy Webb, and as Director of Student Information, it's my privilege to introduce you tonight five MVPs from the Technology Division. The first is Ellie Ibarra. Tonight Ellie has her husband Jesse and her sons Jason and Justin with her. Ellie is a computer technician who manages technology SOS logs for five or six campuses. Ellie has a strong work ethic and strives to meet the standard turnaround time of 24 to 48 hours, and just so you'll know, she typically meets that by being less than 24 hours. Listen to some comments that her colleagues and some campus administrators made about her. No matter when we call her, she's here or will be here in a very short time. She's on campus early in the day and late at night. You never have to ask twice. She is insightful in helping us to plan for future technology needs. She is always the first person to lead a hand without being asked. She is quick to understand what needs to be done and gets it done efficiently. During online testing, and of course, Tellpass, Advanced Placement, she's here with everything set up before we even ask to make sure all is running according to plan. That's no small feat at a school the size of Creekview. She is calm and just easy to work with, great personality. Ellie is a team player in the truest sense of the word. She truly exhibits all the traits of an MVP. As evidenced by the comments from her colleagues and administrator, Ellie Ibarra is an MVP. Ellie, congratulations on being recognized for your contribution in making the vision possible. Our second recipient tonight is Vernon, Anthony Cummins, sorry, Anthony. Anthony is the district's Network Operations Manager and has been part of the CFB family for 21 years. When Anthony joined CFB, the Network Operations Center was in the Admin Annex, in a very cold room behind locked doors. Anthony works with others at a high level to investigate and resolve network problems. His behind-the-scenes actions of quickly diagnosing and optimizing systems have created a solid network environment with little or no downtime. Anthony is one of the keys in maintaining a 99.99% reliability factor for network operation uptime. If you've had the opportunity to visit with Anthony, you know that he communicates with his hands. In vendor meetings, participants have been warned to watch out or they might just lose an eye. Anthony knows his craft well, but tends to explain situations using vocabulary that sounds like an unknown language. Fortunately, Anthony understands whether others do or not, and he demonstrates confidence that will dismiss any of our doubts. Anthony is a team player and is always concerned how system hiccups impact staff and students, particularly during high-stakes testing. Anthony Cummins is a behind-the-scenes player who is an MVP. Anthony, congratulations on being recognized for your contribution in making the vision possible. And now Vernon Hubbard. Vernon Hubbard is a computer technician who, like Ellie, prides himself in maintaining the standard for resolving SOS logs. While serving five to six campuses, he too manages the majority of his campus logs in 24 hours or less. Vernon has been described as a team player. Listen to these comments that were made about Vernon. He is always there to help and support our team. He is the first one to volunteer to assist when needed. He takes care of his campuses above and beyond his scope of responsibility. He comes in early and leaves late. I hear a recurring theme here all of a sudden. He anticipates situations and he is able to resolve them quickly and confidently. He takes his responsibility for preparing the computer environment for online testing very seriously. He strives to provide an optimized environment to minimize additional stress to students and staff. He is an asset to our team. As evidenced by these comments, Vernon Hubbard is also an MVP. Vernon, congratulations on being recognized for your contribution to making the vision possible. Our next recipient is John Atchison. And with John tonight is his wife, Amy. John is an Assistant Network Manager responsible for Maintaining Exchange. For those of you who don't want to know what Exchange is, it is our email system. John is relatively new to CFB. Before coming to CFB, he managed the exchange system for Fort Worth ISD and then for Hastings Entertainment. In the short time he's been here, it's exhibited the qualities of a team player. His colleagues say, "He has excellent knowledge. He demonstrates a teamwork ethic. He has a friendly personality. He lends a hand whenever and wherever needed. He is calm and cool. He works well under pressure." John appears to be a quiet man, and he is, unless the subject of the Dallas Cowboys surfaces. To say he's an avid Cowboy fan is a bit of an understatement. John, like Anthony, is a behind-the-scenes player. John understands the importance of quick communication in the world of education. His goal is for email communications to be seamless and without interruption. During his brief tenure, John has become a valuable asset to the CFB team. John is a behind-the-scenes player who is an MVP. John, congratulations on being recognized for your contribution. And our last recipient is Jim Remington. And with Jim tonight is his mother Fran, his daughter Ashley, and his granddaughter Addison, probably the pride of his life. Jim Remington is an instructional technology support specialist with Newman Smith High School being his primary campus of responsibility. Listen to comments made about Mr. Remington. Mr. Remington has been a constant source of support. He responds quickly to calls for assistance with technology questions and concerns. He takes time to show staff and students how to work with technology, making the most of its educational value. During online testing, EOC, Tellpass, AP, he was available to everyone and took time to assist staff and students. His calm reassurance minimized additional stress on students and staff, and again, that's no small feat at Newman Smith High School. He was proactive in resolving situations, often staying late in the afternoon and evenings to ensure the test sessions will be successful the following day. Jim is a valued member of our team. His dedication, expertise, and innovation truly make the vision possible. As evidenced by the comments you've heard, Jim Remington is an MVP. Jim, congratulations.
Good evening, President Klein, members of the board, and Dr. Burns. My name is Steve Franks, and I'm the Accounting Director for the district. Tonight, I have the honor of introducing MVP recipient Annette Thompson. She is completing her 20th year with the district and her 10th year with the business office. I first met Annette when she started with the district, when I started with the district, a little over a year ago. I immediately had noticed Annette's wonderful laugh and her willingness to take on additional tasks. During my first week, she came to my office and said that she would take on any additional tasks that I had available. Since then, I've watched Annette grow from mostly clerical tasks to higher-level, more challenging accounting responsibilities. Although Annette stays busy with her job, she always has time to assist campus secretaries with whatever problem they might have. Annette recently went back to college and has completed her first accounting class. Not surprisingly, she aced it. I sincerely believe that she will be graduating with an accounting degree someday soon, and I will be there encouraging her every step of the way. I have heard Dr. Burns talk on a number of occasions about longevity and the importance of retaining and rewarding outstanding employees. I believe that Annette is a great example of this type of employee. Annette has made significant contributions to our district in her first 20 years, and I believe that she continues to grow and get better every day. And with that said, it's exciting to think about what she'll accomplish over the next 20 years.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm Bob Tifton. I'm the Principal at the Mary Grimes Education Center, Principal of the V Campus for the CFB, and Supervisor of the Universal Technology Access Group, and that's the position that I'm here tonight in. We are here tonight to recognize John Kostetter as an individual who is making the vision possible. This is John's 21st year in the district. John began in the district teaching sixth grade, first at Blanton Elementary and then at Davis Elementary. He then moved over to the Technology Department as an instructional tech and has been working with the technology since then. I first met John 15 years ago, and for those who have been around a while, you'll remember a small building behind Perry Middle School, where John went from computer to computer, teaching us the basics, computer skills that would improve our efficiency at work. You also will remember him at Convocation, sitting behind a bank of buttons and levers, controlling an elaborate stage production that rallies us together as a team for the coming year. He also works with you individually, helping you develop efficient ways to deliver information to others with the use of technology. John was nominated for this honor because of his ongoing service to the district with technology and supporting human resources, payroll, student services, and benefits, so that the district operations can support the teachers who increase student achievement. I doubt there are many employees in this district who haven't been touched by John's work. If you have done any online training for the districts, from the mandatory trainings at the beginning of the school year, to new teacher in-service, to the webinars from each of the departments mentioned above, John has probably had some role in the production of that product. He is currently helping with wrapping up presentations for Administrative Academy next week. One of his peers said, "John is part of the CFB team, and without him, making the vision possible is that much harder." John has worked for me for the past year. I have found him to be eager to take on new tasks, to learn new technology, and always with a big smile. Thank you, John, for all you do behind the scenes for the district. We are pleased to honor John Kostetter as an individual who is definitely making the vision possible.
Ms. Klein, Dr. Burns, members of the board, I'm Joe Palcy, Principal at Newman Smith High School, and I'm pleased to introduce our MVP, Doris Susan Chamberlain. Ms. Chamberlain was born and raised in Oklahoma, but she is a Texas treasure. She came to Newman Smith 15 years ago from McAllister, Oklahoma, well, that's the same place Reba McIntyre was born, and she attended Southeastern State University in Durant, majoring in English, and her work as a paraprofessional in the Counseling Department at Newman Smith has been exemplary over the years. Ms. Chamberlain has a see-it, own-it, solve-it, do-it mentality, and when she came to Smith, her impact on the campus was immediate and positive. She can do any job on that campus, including mine, and stakeholders know if they don't want a true, honest answer, now listen to this, if they don't want a true, honest answer to a question, then ask someone else. Ms. Chamberlain grew up near a prison in McAllister, Oklahoma, which also suggests that she knows how to take care of herself. She is competitive and compassionate about her job. She cares deeply for the students, and they likewise care for her. Now beneath that Tex-oke exterior is a person with a big heart. Now, I've been told she takes care of abused stray dogs, loves antique stores, estate sales, the architecture design of old homes, and fishing. And I've also been told, and I'm not certain if this is correct, Susan, you can correct me or kill me tomorrow, that they like to go, she and her husband Gary like to take road trips and count bridges. That's pretty, that's pretty different. Now Susan and her husband Gary are the parents of two sons, Blaine and Tyler. Now, both young men graduated from Newman Smith. Even Susan's daughter-in-law Julie is a Smith graduate. Susan has a grandson, Cal, aged two, that she adores. Newman Smith High School is a great American high school because it stands on the shoulders of great people like Doris Susan Chamberlain. Please welcome our MVP, Susan Chamberlain.
Good evening, Ms. Klein, Dr. Burns, member of the board. I'm Sherri Skutch, and I have the privilege of being the Principal at Ranchview High School. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Cindy McWhorter, the newest recipient of our MVP Award for Ranchview High School. Cindy is the voice that greets our visitors at Ranchview in the front office and on the phone every day. She is always helpful no matter how busy she is. Cindy adeptly makes sure that we have substitute coverage for classes even when it is the last minute. She always keeps her cool when things are stressful, like when 10 people call in sick on a Friday in the spring. Not that that ever happens. Cindy has worked at Ranchview for 10 years, and we are lucky to have such a reliably hard-working member on our team. So please help me congratulate Cindy McWhorter for making the vision possible every single day.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, President Klein, and members of the board. I'm Debbie Williams, Principal of Kent Elementary, and it is my pleasure tonight to honor Stacy Stevens for making the vision possible in CFB. Stacy is a tremendous asset to our school. Stacy works daily with students who need extra TLC in our pass classroom. Her work is personal to her. She gives her very best every day to ensure that students are making academic progress and learning social skills needed to succeed. Stacy not only serves the students at Kent Elementary, but she continues to serve children with special needs in our community through a program at her church that is uniquely designed for those needs for special children who have those special needs. Stacy's true gift is her patience and her kindness. Stacy greets students and colleagues every day with a smile. She is loved by everyone at Kent, and almost everyone at Kent is here on the last day of school. Kent would not be the best of the best without Stacy Stevens. Stacy, you're making the vision possible at Kent Elementary.
Ms. Klein, Dr. Burns, and members of the board, I'm Joe Gillan, Executive Director of CTE Counseling and Nurses, and I am so proud to introduce to you Ms. Katie Tilton. Katie Tilton has been with the district since 2004 and currently serves as Counseling Assistant. Katie has worn numerous hats throughout her years in CFB. Some, but not all, of her many duties include facilitating the Youth Leadership Program with the Farmers' Branch Chamber of Commerce, supporting the district's graduation completion initiative through overseeing the evening tax tutorials, monitoring tutors in the Play-Doh Lab, and coordinating avid tutoring schedules for nine secondary campuses. Katie coordinates scholarship opportunities from Town North Bank and Farmers' Branch Chamber of Commerce. She provides clerical support to the career and technical education staff, counseling, nursing, and the school-age parenting program. She also assists with implementation of the biannual fifth-grade Career Fair, Texas Scholars, and Reach for the Stars programs. As if that isn't enough, on any given day, one might see Katie putting up or taking down holiday decorations, participating in a ropes course, or organizing a group of students for a trip to Austin. In short, Katie does it all and does it with a smile. She has proven herself to be a dedicated employee with an incredible work ethic. No matter what she is asked to do or when she is asked to do it, Katie rises to the task at hand. One can trust Katie to complete endeavors thoroughly in a timely manner. She's personable and professional and has formed positive relationships with both CFB staff members as well as individuals from the community at large. Michelle Capever said, "Katie is my absolute right hand for so many of my projects. I rely upon her heavily, and she always meets and often surpasses my expectations." Steve Ann Smith adds, "Katie is always courteous and represents our department in a professional manner. Katie's positive nature and willingness to help with all tasks makes all of our jobs easier." Farmers' Branch Chamber of Commerce Director Anna Kuna said, "Katie Tilton has been a longstanding partner of the Farmers' Branch Chamber of Commerce in her involvement with student programs. She is admired for her professionalism, team spirit, and positive energy. In fact, she recently received a Chamber Award in recognition of her contributions." As these observations illustrate, Katie Tilton is both an integral and cherished member of the Educational Services Team. As such, we are delighted for her to receive the Making the Vision Possible Award this evening.
You know, we have a little theme going tonight about making the vision possible. And, you know, we often quote a MIT professor, Peter Singh. He says, "It's not the vision, it's what the vision causes." And so tonight, we are here to recognize people that have carried on a vision that happened several years ago, which we'll tell you a little bit about. But, you know, we can't always control the weather for things, but what we can control is our actions to still honor and recognize those before us that have really made a difference in our district. And so I'm here, and I'm honored tonight to be able to introduce the students who helped make Casey's Run a success, even though the weather came and intervened just a little bit on us. So, students, would you please come forward to make our presentation? And while they're coming up, we'd also like Mel and Candy Breckus to come up, the parents of Casey, and without their vision as well and their support, we wouldn't be able to continue this tradition. And so we are so thankful of what Casey contributed to this district, as well as what her legacy continues to contribute. So Mel and Candy, thank you very much.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, members of the board, Assistant Superintendents, teachers, staff, and CFB ISD community members. My name is Kareem Bryant, and I am a senior at Ranchview High School and one of the student coordinators of the 2013 Casey's Run. We would like to honor the 10 years of commitment and dedication to this worthy endeavor, so at this time, I would like to ask that all CFB ISD All-Stars, the Breckus family, and student coordinators, please come to the front of the room, which they are now. Nelson Mandela once said, "Our deepest fear is not that we are inadequate, but that we are powerful beyond measure, that when we let our own light shine, we unconsciously give others permission to do the same." Students helping students, students empowering, leading, accepting other students, the boundless opportunities to free the passion, commitment, and determination of others is the beating heart of Casey's Run benefiting the CFB ISD Special Olympics. Our mission is to create an opportunity for the CFB ISD community, its students and staff, to experience to experience our CFB ISD All-Star Special Olympics athletes through their involvement as volunteers, sponsors, and participants. Our events promote acceptance, encouragement, and empowerment through the service to others. We honor the legacy of service of Casey Breckus, a project which now includes every one of our 37 educational campuses began 14 years ago as an simple effort to raise funds for its local Special Olympics team. An epic evolution of service to others. Casey's Run tells the story of a student who was empowered to lead, whose tragic death inspired others to give it, to give themselves, and a legacy which continues today in the hearts of students whose mission remains the same. Casey Breckus was a 2003 graduate of RL Turner High School, a former student coordinator of the Turner Torch Run, and an active leader in countless school and community organizations. Seizing the opportunity to give herself, Casey developed a passion for assisting students with special needs. Through her involvement, through her, through her involvement as a student coordinator of the Turner Torch Run, Casey's leadership skills were enriched as she experienced firsthand the good that comes from the service to others. Following her tragic death during her freshman year at, at University of Texas Red McComb School of Business, Tracy, Casey's family recognized the opportunity to continue her legacy of service by contributing to the Turner Torch Run in her name. Shortly after, the, the run adopted a new name, Casey's Run, and embraced the mission of students helping students as its primary focus. Today, Casey's Run unites passionate student coordinators from four high school campuses in an effort to carry out this mission. Annually, it is what sets this 5K apart from many others in this area. The passion, participation, and enthusiasm of student volunteers who recognize the good that they do empowers their peers in a special way. Tonight, we celebrate the transcending success of the extraordinary 10-year partnership with the Breckus family through the advancement of leadership opportunities and participation in the athletic endeavors. CFB ISD Casey's Run and the Breckus family strive for the same goal, where Casey's Run provides the students an opportunity to lead their peers in making a difference. They actively receive the knowledge of leadership through education and athletics while working to empower their disabled peers through the participation in the same outlets. A partnership which now has raised over $110,000 through the years in the name of its student volunteerism and leadership development, we recognize and express deep appreciation to Candy and Mel Breckus, whose passion for their, whose passion for their daughter and compassion for students in the Carrollton Farmer Branch ISD continues to inspire this event each year. Students helping students, special students, special athletes on the receiving end of this worthy cause. It is now the 250 members of the All-Star Special Olympics team which drives this community to action. Please join me now as we sell, as we recognize the hard work and dedication of all these involved. Thank you.
We truly have a room full of MVPs tonight, and I don't know about you guys, but I feel really good about retirement when I see kids up here like this, making a difference for everyone, okay? We are, we are in good hands when we kind of have reached the end of our days a little bit, so, students, thank you so much. That concludes our recognitions. We do have a few announcements we'd like to share with you, so if you would look at the screen, we'll share some district announcements with you.
Well, it's the end of the school year. We're wrapping up things in AMAT, and of course, our seniors have hit the door running. And since most of our seniors have checked out, I'm here to deliver the final board announcements for the 2012-2013 school year. And to start off, we have a special CFB ISD election update. We will have a runoff election on June 15th for place five on the CFB ISD school board between Jose Galvez and Randy Shackman. You can find a list of voting locations by visiting the election information page on the district's website at www.cfbisd.edu/election. I was joking a little bit about our seniors earlier. They are some of the most brightest and most creative students I have seen in a really long time, and I'm very proud to watch them graduate on June 9th. And in fact, all of our high schools will be graduating on June 9th at the University of North Texas Coliseum. Newman Smith Ceremony will take place at 9:00 a.m., followed by RL Turner at 1:00 p.m. Creekview will be next at 4:00 p.m., and Ranchview will be the last graduation of the day starting at 7:00 p.m. Good luck, seniors, and congratulations. Graduation signals the start of summer vacation in the education world, but here at CFB, we're always working for you, just on a little bit different set of hours. Our district offices will have special summer hours through July. The offices will be open bright and early in the morning at 7:00 a.m., and they'll be open until 5:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday. All offices will be closed on Fridays. Offices will also be closed on July 4th in observance of the Fourth of July holiday. And please remember, even though regular school year is over, we still have quite a few classes on the summer school campuses. Be aware, all school zones will be operational around all summer school locations. Our next regular school board meeting will be on Thursday, August 1st at 7:00 p.m., right here in the administration building at 1445 North Perry Road in Carrollton. There'll be no board meeting in the month of July. Our next school board work-study session will be held on Thursday, June 20th at 6:30 p.m. Well, that's it for the announcements. We'll see you back next school year. For the latest back-to-school information for the 2013-2014 school year, please visit We wish everyone in the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District a safe and fun-filled summer. Be sure and read some good books. Good night.
Ms. Klein, members of the board, that concludes our recognition and announcements for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Our MVP recognition is something that a couple of board members thought of. We get to recognize our teachers throughout the year, but they say, "What about those other people that help make the vision possible?" And Dr. Burns always comes up with these cool abbreviations and things that we get to use to recognize people, but we really do appreciate what y'all do to help make us successful at what we do, and we love hearing your stories. And I think that it is something that's very meaningful about what we get to do as board members. Thank you for choosing CFB as your team to support. We think of our goal of high achievement for all students, and we think a lot about academics, but after this, we're going to get to hear about fine arts and athletics. But I also think what we do for society and how we raise our kids is important, and I appreciate Casey's Run. I like to challenge Mr. Shore and Mr. Goode to the 5K run, and I was kind of glad it didn't happen this year, because I had these high aspirations of beating Mr. Shore. But the year before, he took off running, and I couldn't catch him. So, I will try to prepare better next year and hope the weather cooperates, but at least I don't have to hear about it from him. But there really is a lot to being healthy, and that's one thing we talk about in teaching our kids, and all the things that they're learning from participating in that program, and the benefits that naturally roll with the Special Olympics team also. So, thank you to the team that we got to recognize up here. We really do appreciate the extra effort you give there. So, one of the just cool things, and I guess y'all have to go to work tomorrow, even though the students are out, but we thank you for spending your Thursday evening here with us, and we're going to take a brief recess for those who may not want to spend the rest of the night with us. We'll reconvene in 10 minutes. It's currently 7:41, so we'll get back to work at 7:51 for the agenda item report by the superintendent, but it is going to include athletics and fine arts, so maybe you'd like to stay. So, with that said, thank y'all a lot so much. It's only been nine minutes, but y'all obviously look ready, so we'll go ahead and get started. Well, Ms. Walton's not ready. We'll call this meeting the Carrollton Farmers Branch Board of Trustees back to order at 7:50 p.m. We are on Agenda Item 3, but before moving on to Agenda Item 3, I'd like to remind the audience that the board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so during Agenda Item 4A, Audience for Guests. Audience for Guests is a mechanism the board uses to receive feedback and input from our constituents. If you want to address the board, you'll need to fill out a form that's outside the door on the table, and please give it to Ms. Sharon Scrivener, and I'll receive it before 4A. So at this time, we're at Agenda Item 3, Report by Superintendent 3A, Presentation on Student Achievement, Athletics and Fine Arts. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Members of the board, you know, this is our last game, kind of last performance, if you will, of our school board meetings for the year, and we always conclude it with a special presentation from athletics and, and the arts. And I would just like to say for just a minute, you know, we, we talk about achievement. I mean, that's, we have a relentless focus on student achievement, but we know that academics is directly impacted by the quality athletic programs and the quality arts programs we have in this district. They are interdependent, they are integral to our success, and so we're honored tonight to be able to celebrate those. We have many successes, but let it be known, our overall academic success all has contributed to the many things that we provide for our kids in athletics and arts. So, having said that, I believe first up on the program tonight will be athletics from Coach Putter, and so, we're going to talk a little bit about the outstanding accomplishments this year in CFB athletics. Coach Putter?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Dr. Burns, Mrs. Klein, the Board of Trustees, it is my pleasure tonight to present the annual year-end review for athletics. But before we venture onto the field of dreams, I'd like to take this moment to acknowledge our athletic coordinators who are here tonight for all their mental toughness and extra effort on their individual campuses. So, when I call up your name, please stand. From Ranchview High School, Teri Smith. From Creekview High School, Jay Klein, Angel Modder. From RL Turner High School, Michael Ramirez. From Newman Smith High School, Paul Ressa and Christine Gregory. From our middle schools, we have our middle school athletic coordinators here with us tonight. From Blalack Middle School, Tucker West. From Dan F. Long, we have Frank Lightfoot. From Polk Middle School, we have Richard Hyde. From Perry Middle School, we have Caleb Noble. From Vivian Field Middle School, we have James Otto. And from Bush Middle School, we have Eric Costa. We would have loved to bring our 200-plus coaches here, but I don't think the room could hold us, so, all these people here, our coaches here, representing their schools. Also here tonight, we have seven Coach of the Years, which is a great and gallant effort on coaching. From Newman Smith, we have Percy Johnson, Amanda Leader, Matt Ellis, John Cleveland, From RL Turner, we have Robert Evans. And from Ranchview High School, we have Kevin Kelson. Congratulations on your success. Lastly, I would like to thank my staff who's here with me tonight. Without them, our department would not run as smooth as it is. With, with me tonight is Jana Weldon, Angela Taylor, Bobby Portman, and Tyrone Larkins. Athletics would not happen unless we had the collaborative and collective support from our high school and middle school principals, our central administration, and of course, our Board of Trustees. From all of us to all of you, we thank you very much. Finally, I would like to take a moment and thank Jason Wheeler from RL Turner AMAT, who designed our video, as well as a senior student from RL Turner, Claudia Arajerta, hopefully I said that right, for lending her voice so I wouldn't have to talk through the whole thing. So, on with the show, and let's have a year of celebration.
The human brain can continue to grow and improve with exercise. Kids who take breaks from their classwork to be physically active during the school day are often better able to concentrate on their schoolwork and may do better on standardized tests. Short physical activity breaks of about 5 to 20 minutes in the classroom can improve attention span, classroom behavior, and achievement test scores. In CFB ISD, 19,508 students do some type of physical activity every day through either physical education class or athletics. Participation in moderate to vigorous activity allows the blood to flow to the brain and stimulate the mind while learning. This can improve grade point average, school attendance, educational aspirations, and the likelihood of graduation. 4,033 student athletes in grades 7 through 12 participate in one or more sports. These athletes are enrolled in 5,480 pre-AP or AP classes averaging a GPA of 3.0 and higher. 116 CFB ISD athletes were offered 188 scholarships totaling over $11 million. Without the educational and athletic opportunities offered by our school district to create a well-rounded student, 41% of our scholarship recipients may not have been able to continue on with their educational goal of attending college. In addition, 94% of these athletes achieved four or more levels within their healthy fitness zones during annual fitness gram assessments, further validating that physically active students are better learners. The CFB ISD athletics goal is high achievement for all students. This year, athletes once again outdid themselves, whether off the field doing community service or competing on their field of dreams. The athletes experienced great success. 22 sports teams from a variety of CFB schools made a difference in the lives of community stakeholders by completing 27 service projects. Athletes donated their time and gave back to the community, who embraced and supported them through the tears and cheers. These are just a few of the service projects completed by the athletes. Food preparation and delivery for Joe's Pizza's annual Thanksgiving Day Dinner. City of Carrollton cleanup project. Christmas show at Silverado Assisted Living Center. Assisted Farmers Branch firefighters replacing smoke alarms 10 years and older. Helped out at the North Texas State Trampoline and Tumbling Meet. Moving from the community back into the gym and field of play, the success of our athletes continues upward. This year, 14 teams made the playoffs, with four of those teams being district champions in the sport of basketball, soccer, and golf. Behind every athlete and team is a great teacher. This year, seven coaches were named Coach of the Year. From Newman Smith High School, Percy Johnson, Amanda Leader, Matt Ellis, John Cleveland, and Eric Ogneby. And from RL Turner High School, Robert Evans. From Ranchview High School, Kevin Kelson. These coaches represent boys' and girls' basketball, boys' soccer, swimming and diving, girls' wrestling, and girls' golf. The competitive success continues with the team sports. Seven teams were by-district finalists. Creekview Volleyball, Creekview and Newman Smith Girls Basketball, RL Turner Boys and Girls Soccer, Creekview and Newman Smith Baseball. Four teams were area finalists. Newman Smith and Ranchview Boys Basketball, Creekview Girls, and Newman Smith Boys Soccer. One regional quarter-finalist, Creekview Softball. Two regional finalists, Newman Smith Boys Cross Country and Ranchview Girls Golf. And CFB ISD had 137 individual regional qualifiers in the sport of And CFB ISD had 137 individual regional qualifiers in the sport of cross-country, golf, wrestling, powerlifting, and track. The ultimate goal in sports is to become a champion. CFB ISD had 22 state qualifiers in the sports of cross-country, diving, wrestling, powerlifting, golf, and track, which produced two state champions. Haley Garcia from RL Turner High School became the 108, 38-pound, 5A state wrestling champion, a first for female wrestlers in CFB ISD sports history. Antoinette Stort from Rancho High School became the 3A state track champion in the 100-meter hurdles. As this year comes to a close watch, Antoinette, she finishes with a time of 14.05 seconds, where she was just 1/100th of a second from breaking the 3A state track record set back in 1996 with a time of 14.04 seconds at the UIL State Track and Field Meet in Austin.
Out of the box we go, clean start from everyone. And it looks like lane seven. Yep, that is lane seven. That's Stewart. Stewart running away from the field, but here comes Shepherd. And Shepherd and Stewart, can Shepherd catch her? It's Stewart, a slight edge, it's going to be tight, I think it's, ooh! That's going to be real close. Shepherd was close. So we're getting Stewart from the PA announcer. Was Stewart officially 14.05?
She missed the state record by 1/100th of a second.
CFB ISD athletics supports the district's goal of high achievement for all student athletes. Fitness activities have impacted the learning and success of our athletes. CFB ISD offers an educational pathway that has opened doors for many of our students to succeed in the classroom, on the field, and at the next level. We congratulate our student athletes on their high achievements for the 2012-2013 school year. On behalf of the athletes and coaches who give 100% of their time and effort to make CFB ISD proud, we thank you for your support.
Thank you again. And if you have any questions, we're here to entertain any.
Board members, are there any questions for Coach Putter? I was just going to comment that the recognition program that was for athletics and fine arts at Rancho about in the last month was very interesting, and it was able to really recognize the students for their achievement, and we appreciate that. Mr. Shore?
I can't help myself.
I knew you would.
So. Here's my question. About a decade ago, coaches were charged with trying to get wins and to have success on the field of competition. Dr. Burns suggested that we read a book entitled Spark.
That is correct.
And in Spark, we learn that the PE instructors are perhaps the most important people in the district.
They are.
Okay. Why are they perhaps the most important instructors in the district?
Because they motivate the students physically that challenge them academically.
Do you think that they know that they're the ones who build the brain cells?
Sure.
The other instructors, it's their job to fill the brain cells, but those people out there?
Build it.
They're the ones who build the brain cells.
That is correct.
And if they don't know that, then we need to get that message across.
Absolutely. And Mr. Shore, as you know, we've had this conversation many times, you cannot put a price tag on somebody's health and their fitness, especially at a young age for kids. But what we also know about not only the health benefits, but it is the brain benefit. It's those growing those brain cells so they can achieve and they can excel in the classroom. And so there's a reason why we're number seven academically in ERG, and that's because we push them hard on the playing field and in the courts and around the track, as well as we do a pretty good job of singing and dancing too, which you're going to hear in just a minute.
I say this every year, but I feel it's worth repeating every year. I had four athletes at RL Turner, and I can honestly say that the coaches that they had on the field and on the court were the best teachers they also had in the classroom because they had a knack for taking what they learned and what they were taught on the field and on the court into the classroom. And I just sing the praises of coaches as academic leaders as well as health leaders.
Could that include the superintendent also, Mrs. Watten?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yes, Mr. Matthews?
Back in the day when I was in the athletic arena, yes, I was constantly fighting the stigma with some people, maybe other staff members and members of the community, that, you know, coaches as a rule just don't really make real good classroom teachers. They just don't have time to prepare for their classrooms like regular teachers do. And I can say, because I know most of all these ladies and gentlemen sitting here before us, I haven't heard anybody say that in a long time. These guys and gals do a great job in the classroom, on the football field, and off, or whatever field you're on, basketball court, whatever, in school and out of school. They represent us well, and I'm just proud to be associated with them.
Yep. So are you ready for fine arts, Dr. Burns?
We are. Before I go, that, coaches, we know how hard you work, we appreciate you, and we know all good teams win in the offseason, right? So when everybody else is gearing down, I know you're gearing up. So go get them this summer. Now, you know, we're going to shift to arts here just a minute. And arts, as well as athletics, have an impact on the brain. We know that, the research is out there as well. You know, kids do better when they're exposed to arts, whether it be music, playing instruments, singing, dancing, et cetera. Even the visual arts has an impact on brain cells as well. So we're also very pleased that we have such an outstanding art program. Arts program, now, I do want to say that I had my debut this year in the theater, and I got to tell you, it's a lot of work, okay? And I just had a small piece, all I had to do was talk, okay? But I know how hard those actors and actresses and all of the people involved from our orchestra that played at our musicals and things like that, you would not believe the time and the effort those students put in. It's truly remarkable. And I know that's why their achievement is high, because they learn many things about discipline and sticking to a task and working hard. And so the third A in our As tonight, achievement, athletics, and now arts.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, Mrs. Klein, and members of the board. It's my distinct privilege to stand before you this evening, representing the Fine Arts Department. During my first year as Director of Fine Arts, I've been overwhelmed with extraordinary talent of both our faculty and our students. From day one, it has been our desire to aim higher in our efforts to educate our students in the area of fine arts. Tonight, we're going to show you a video that has literally taken a year to compile. You will see pictures and video representing every area underneath our fine arts umbrella. In many ways, the video speaks for itself through visual documentation and narration, but I do want to take just a second and thank Mr. Robert Shepherd from Creekview High School for narrating our video. And a special thanks to Mr. Jason Wheeler, Director of the AMAT Program, and Mr. Freddie Wilmot, both from RL Turner High School, for overseeing this production. With Jason's direction, two of his students, Kenton Scott and Matt Ozingo, took this presentation on as a year-long project. Many of the pictures and videos were taken, recorded, and processed by these two young men in addition to the pictures and video provided by our faculty. It is interesting to see the fine arts through the eyes of students in our district. And finally, I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to praise the work of my staff and faculty. In the Fine Arts Office, we have three incredible women who do unbelievable work. And two of them are here, I'll tell you, my secretary, Jeanne Hayden, is not feeling well this evening, and I don't know if she was having sympathy pains with me, but she's unable to be here, but she is truly magnificent. We also have Fran Bolti here. Fran, would you stand? As you know, Fran is retiring this year after 72 years in public education. She has done marvelous work, has been already a great mentor to me, and I appreciate you very much. We also have Pam Appolucci here, who I'll be in trouble for making her stand, but Pam, And of course, we have 154 incredible fine arts teachers. They're not all here, but many of them are, and I would ask the fine arts teachers to Without further delay, if I can figure out how to run this computer, we'd like to show
Since the founding of our country, the arts have played a fundamental role in educating the whole child. In the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independence School District, we count it an honor and privilege to have the opportunity to facilitate the investigation and discovery of the arts for all our students. Our programs provide an innovative educational experience where students are encouraged to aim higher in their efforts to be successful in all areas of the fine arts. Even at a young age, our students demonstrate a high level of accomplishment in the arts. Each of our 26 elementary campuses have both an art and music teacher, providing 52 educators whose total focus is the education and implementation of our elementary fine arts curriculum. Our 12,256 elementary music and art students have given over 220 concerts and art presentations throughout the year. There are 435 students involved in art clubs, where many of our students' works of art are used by kids' cards for the Green Card Program. Additionally, many of our students' musical and artistic work has been recognized by the PTA Reflections Competition, where six students, Stacy Abara Aquilin, Vrinda Varada, Aditya Gupta, Angelina Wu, Arnaud Khan, and Kiana Fordeui, were recognized at the state level competition, and CFB student Peter Choi had his artwork displayed on the TEA website for September 2012.
CFB Fine Arts has just changed and strengthened the gifts that my boys have already had. Each of them has developed musically and onstage in the theater programs in just ways that we never could have imagined when we saw them starting out as first, second graders.
Communication skills in the 21st century are the keys to success. The CFB speech and debate teams with an enrollment of 309 high school students stand out in the state and nation as one of the finest examples of practical and competitive speaking. Students regularly win the highest awards and tournaments all year long. This year, they participated in 36 district tournaments with 10 first-place wins. Creekview won the district overall speech team championship and has three National Forensic League tournament qualifiers, Michael Ferguson, Bridget Ludwig, and Matty Wright, along with the Texas Forensic Association State Humorous Interpretation Champion, Michael Ferguson. Likewise, Sam Winstall and Sarah Grace Withers from Newman Smith placed third in the state for public forum debate, and Sarah Grace Withers is a qualifier to the National Forensic League Tournament this summer.
I think it's helped me in so many different aspects of my high school career, and I plan on taking that forward into college as well, both in interviews, in presentations, in my essay writing, and just the way I present myself in front of my peers and as well as other adults.
I think it's especially helpful with media today to talk about being biased on one side, but it really forces you to kind of put your own background aside and really look at the facts and kind of weigh which one, so you have more of an informed decision.
Theater, like no other medium, has the power to tell the stories of our lives. In CFB, our 1,772 theater students have the ability to express, share, and develop the characters of both real life and fiction. In developing these characters, our students learn to listen, understand, empathize, demonstrate, and evaluate. Our students' accomplishments include over 70 public performances, including UIL performances where both Creekview and Newman Smith advanced to area, and Newman Smith further advancing to regionals. In both our high school and middle school programs, our theater students have racked up over 45 Best Actor and All-Star Cast selections. Even our technicians are accomplished. Creekview has one technician in technical design, Shelby War, moving on to the state level. Newman Smith earned three nominations from the Dallas Summer Musical Theater Program for their winter musical performance of How to Succeed. Dance and Drill Team have been described as artistry in motion. The coordination and skill needed to understand the intricate techniques involved in dance and drill team are some of the most difficult to learn. In CFB, it's our goal that all 689 of our Dance and Drill Team students be empowered to express themselves, both as part of a larger group and as individuals. Interpretation and evaluation helps students to learn how each movement tells a story and communicates a message. Our groups have performed in competitions, parades, and master classes, including over 89 dance performances. Our dancers have competed in nationally recognized competitions and have been selected as outstanding organizations in these competitions. Ashton Overbeck from Creekview was also signaled out by the PTA Reflections Contest as state winner in dance choreography. Her work is on its way to the national competition. Adam Wodeski and Corley Lovett from Newman Smith High School both advanced in the nationally televised dance competition, So You Think You Can Dance. Our drill teams march in many local parades and often in dance and spirit competitions around the state. Humankind has always aspired to communicate through visual art. From nature to planned projects, art is a constant in our lives. In CFB, all of our 2,526 secondary art students have a curriculum that's challenging, creative, and sequential to allow the students' minds to open up to the possibilities that art can bring to life. Drawing, painting, sculpting are all a part of the everyday lives of our students. The ability to express one's deepest thoughts through the medium of art helps our students to analyze and think critically. Our students' accomplishments include over 50 public art displays and over 175 students involved in after-school secondary art clubs. Our students' work has been recognized by displays at Vase, on dart buses, and through the PTA Reflections Contest. This year, we have one Rancho student, Alex Kim, who medaled at state in the Vase Program. Instrumental music in the form of band has been the hallmark of both celebratory and somber events. From halftime shows to the concert stage, bands have an incredible power by virtue of the different sounding instruments to move an audience to greater heights of emotion. In CFB, our 2,183 band students have the opportunity to march, play in concert bands, and participate in jazz ensembles and drum lines. In each of these areas, our bands have risen to the top of the field in both their playing ability and in their superior musical skills. Our students' accomplishments include 231 public performances, 120 students in the all-region band, and 12 students from Creekview, Newman Smith, and Rancho High School earning a spot in the Texas All-State Bands. In UIL marching, both Rancho High School and RL Turner advanced to the area level, demonstrating high achievement with superior marching skills. Our students triumph at UIL by generating six UIL sweepstakes awards, and likewise, giving back to the community by performing at nursing homes, marching in the MLK parade, and performing at area hospitals. For years, the CFB Orchestra Program For years, the CFB orchestra programs have been some of the top in the state and nation. With over 1,600 string players in the district, our orchestra program is impacting student lives in a way that brings culture to their lives on a daily basis. The dexterity, talent, and ability to play a stringed instrument requires some of the most delicate and fine tuning skills possible. Our orchestra accomplishments include over 131 public performances, 57 students making All-Region, and two students from Creekview and RL Turner reaching the Texas All-State Orchestra. Additionally, the Creekview Orchestra was selected as the runner-up 5A Honor Orchestra for the state of Texas. In an amazing fashion, the Creekview, Newman Smith, Ranch View, and RL Turner orchestras all received the coveted UIL Sweepstakes Awards. All combined, our secondary orchestras received 16 UIL Sweepstakes Awards. Vocal music as a means of communicating has been around since the beginning of time. The ability to use the voice, filled with the emotion that each day brings, gives vocal music a uniqueness that's particularly human. In CFB, our 1,948 secondary choir students have reached the musical mountaintop in a number of ways. Our choirs have performed over 165 concerts this year and produced 86 All-Region members, with two choir students from Creekview and RL Turner reaching the Texas All-State Choir. Our secondary choirs have earned a combined 18 Sweepstakes Awards. This year, CFB is proud that the Creekview High School Choir was selected as one of the Texas Music Educators State Honor Choirs. Their superior performance in San Antonio in front of 3,000 music educators is the highest award that can be given a high school choir in the state of Texas. Of the 26,000 students in the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District, 23,283 have decided to participate in some area of our fine arts program. It is our mission to create an environment where our students are empowered and encouraged to reach their academic and creative potential while developing a lifelong appreciation for the fine arts. Through a cooperative effort among teachers, students, parents, and administration, the Fine Arts Department supports and demonstrates the district's primary goal of high achievement for all students. You have to look no farther than the teachers in our district to see our goals fulfilled. One such story is Trevor Kay. Trevor began his education at Blatton Elementary and then continued at Polk Middle School, where he participated in band. Recruited by the high school band director, Trevor then joined the Newman Smith Band. After graduation, Trevor received a degree in music education from Texas Tech University. And after working in another district, Trevor returned to CFB as Associate Band Director at Newman Smith. In fact, in CFB, we have 15 teachers who participated in our district's fine arts programs while they were in public school and are now giving back to the district as fine arts educators. With 1,000 public performances and presentations, 23,283 students being served by our fine arts faculty and staff, 40 combined UIL Sweepstakes, 16 all-state musicians, runner-up TMEA Honor Orchestra, TMEA State Honor Choir, multiple state PTA Reflections winners, state and national winners in speech and debate, and state VICE winners. The fine arts in CFB are alive and well. In fact, this year, the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District was once again rated as the 2013 Best Communities for Music Education by the National Association of Music Merchants. With the unwavering support of the CFB administration and Board of Trustees, the CFB Fine Arts Department is committed to its goal of aiming higher and salutes our entire fine arts faculty for using their time and talent to shape the leaders of tomorrow.
That concludes our presentations.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Farr?
Board members, any questions?
That was just awesome.
Mr. Matthews?
Well, I don't have a question. I just want to make a statement, and I think anybody that knows me knows that I'm an aficionado of the arts, and always have been, as well as athletics. But I just want to share two things with you. Before I got elected to the board, I did a lot of substitute teaching, and I was at Ted Polk Middle School on a fairly regular basis, and at once while I'd get stuck with the sixth-grade orchestra.
Privileged.
You know, well, let me finish here. So when you get sixth-grade orchestra, the string section, it sounds like 1,000 cats scratching on a blackboard. And for somebody, a blackboard is something we used to use back a long time ago. But then also, but seeing them knowing what they sounded like when they were seniors, the progression that they made through the years, you know, I am constantly amazed at the quality that our high schools especially, and all the orchestra and band and so forth, I mean, some of our orchestras could compete with the New York Philharmonic. I also had the pleasure of substituting at Blaylock one time, last year, year before, when their choir performed for TMEA. And I had the boys group that, one class period, that performed the "Take Me Out To The Ballgame" routine for TMEA, and they just got back the night before, and they were all in class, and they hadn't been traveling and everything. And I did the lesson planning, and I made them do that performance for me. And it was phenomenal. It almost brought me to tears. It was so good. And these were like seventh graders and eighth graders at Blaylock. It was just phenomenal. So I'm just so impressed with everything we do in fine arts.
Yeah, I think, you know, Ms. Watten said her kids have benefited from athletics, might have benefited from the fine arts, and we appreciate what all we do for the kids. I was wondering, we have a couple of people here tonight with a birthday.
We do, don't we?
And I was thinking maybe the fine arts people would help us sing "Happy Birthday."
They probably would.
Would the people that are having birthdays tonight stand up?
We have a couple, I know, for sure. Some of those birthdays are quite significant. We'll let you ask them what birthday is.
We won't say a milestone of any means, but...
Mr. Farr, you're the choir man.
Would you help us sing "Happy Birthday"?
(Singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear friends. Happy birthday to you.
I apologize for that not being on the agenda, but, and we will never mention a woman's age, correct? Right. But thank y'all for letting me go off-roading with that item. So at this time, we are at Agenda Item Number Four. Dr. Burns?
Yes, ma'am.
Board Operations, Item Four is Audience for Guests. Ms. Scrivener, do we have any audience for guests?
No, ma'am, we do not.
So we do not have any audience for guests. So that brings us to Item Number 4B, Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all consent agenda items, and the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the consent agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda at this time? Mr. Hyatt? Okay. Board members, or Mr. Hyatt?
Miss Klein, thank you. Staff would like to request you to remove Item 4B-23, the purchase of the special ed manager and license renewal. We'd like to table that indefinitely.
Okay. Are there any other items? So we've removed Item 4B-23. Board members, would you like to take any action on the remaining items? Mr. Goode?
I move that we accept the consent agenda with the removal of Agenda Item 4B-23.
I have a motion for Mr. Goode. Do I have a second? Ms. Watten, thank you for your second. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? We have seven in favor and zero opposed. The motion carries. At this time, wow, we're moving quickly. We are now at Item C, Consider Approval of Recommendations for Middle School Principal and Elementary Principal. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Miss Klein. Members of the board, before I present the recommendations tonight, I do want to make an announcement of an administrative reassignment, which does not require board action, but obviously, in the context of the recommendations, you need to know about that assignment as well as the public. And I want to announce tonight that, as most of you know, that Doris Miles, our Director of After-School Programs, is retiring, and taking her place will be Dr. Janet Restivo from Freeman, and she'll be reassigned to Ms. Miles's position. Therefore, we have two elementary principal recommendations for you tonight. We'll need to take individual action on each one, so I'll read them separately. Our first recommendation tonight is Ms. Stephanie Lopez. Ms. Lopez, would you please stand? Before you make a motion, let me just say a few things about Ms. Lopez. You know, you're seeing this theme about growing our own and building our own leadership team. Ms. Lopez has been a teacher in our district, as well as an AP in our district, and now we are recommending her tonight as an elementary principal, and her assignment will be Tom Landry Elementary. Now we can entertain a motion.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, do I have a motion for Ms. Lopez? Mr. Shore?
Move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation for the placement of Stephanie Lopez.
I have a motion for Mr. Shore. Mr. Fleming?
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a second for Mr. Fleming. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? We have seven in favor, zero opposed. That is a motion supporting your appointment by Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Miss Klein. Our next recommendation tonight for elementary principal will be Ms. Robin Callahan. Again, teacher, facilitator, assistant principal, and now a recommendation as elementary principal in our district. In fact, all of Ms. Callahan's educational career has been in CFB.
Thank you. We have a superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion? Mr. Shore?
I would say the exact same motion, except I changed the name. So I move that we approve the recommendation of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. Do we have a second? Thank you. We have a second by Ms. Watten. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? That is seven in favor, zero opposed. That is unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Callahan.
And as you probably deduced from the administrative reassignment announcement, Ms. Callahan's assignment will be Freeman Elementary. Congratulations, Ms. Callahan. We have one more tonight, and that's for middle school principal, and our recommendation is Ms. Ashley Odom Brown. Ms. Brown is also having a birthday. What a way to celebrate, right, Ms. Brown? Stand up. Again, teacher, assistant principal, but also a student of CFB and a graduate of CFB. RL Turner High School, to be exact, but we present to you Ms. Ashley Brown.
Ladies and gentlemen, is there a motion? Mr. Matthews?
Having known Ashley Brown since she was a student at RL Turner High School and being sent to my office about every other day for something, and I'm so proud that you turned it around. It is my honor to make a motion that we approve Ashley Odom Brown as the new principal of my beloved hallowed halls and grounds of DeWitt Prairie Middle School. And it is pronounced "DeWitt" because DeWitt and I used to hang out, and that's what he told me. So that's my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Do we have a second?
James, go ahead.
Mr. Goode?
I'm going to second that, since I knew her as a young lady when she was a student in our school district, along with one of my daughters. And so it has been a pleasure and an honor to know her for all these many years.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second? I guess we need a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Ms. Scrivener, seven in favor, zero opposed.
And as you heard from Mr. Matthews, Ms. Brown's assignment will be DeWitt Prairie Middle School, so congratulations.
And I did see one of your poor new principals carrying around one of these notebooks like you gave us for homework in the summer. So it does apply to your new principals also.
When everybody else is gearing down, we're gearing up.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Item D, Consider Submission of a Nomination for Representative to Region 10, Position B on the Board of Directors of the Texas Association of School Boards.
Miss Klein, members of the board, I think you have the paperwork before you, and this does require a nomination from the board for that position.
Mr. Shore, do I see your hand?
Yes. Nominate James Goode.
Thank you. Mr. Goode, would you...
With great pride, I nominate James Goode.
I'd like to second that.
Ms. Chaffin would like to second that. I saw another hand come up also. Do we have a motion by Mr. Shore and a second by Ms. Chaffin? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any poor person opposed? No. That is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Goode, for representing us or willing to represent us again on the state...
Get yourself on the board again.
Yeah, he's got to go campaign elsewhere. So congratulations, Mr. Goode. Item Number E, Consider All Matters Regarding Submission of Tasby Advocacy Agenda Recommendation by the Board of Trustees. Mr. Shore, you said you had 30 minutes worth of discussion here.
Since I was shot down so dramatically last year, I'm going to give them a year's rest and come back with great vigor next year.
Okay. Mr. Goode, do you have any advocacy agenda items?
I have gone through all of the ones that we had previously submitted, and nearly every, most of those, with the exception of at least one, have been addressed by the legislature. And I do not have any additional recommendations as of this time.
Okay. So what does that mean? Dr. Burns?
Well, I was going to say, Miss Klein, members of the board, so for clarification, would you like for us to submit those, and that be your submissions for this Tasby's request for the 2013 advocacy agendas, which would be for the 2015 legislative year? So you want us to resubmit those as a part of this?
You said all have been approved, except for one.
Except for one.
And you want us to resubmit them? I guess the thing is, we have to take action for you want us to resubmit them to Tasby.
Just one.
We have to send it by July. Just one?
The others have already been taken down by the legislature.
Okay, so you don't want to do them? Okay, all right. So they've all been addressed, you just have one new one? Okay.
If I may, the audience may be wondering why we're talking about "except one," and if you'll give me the opportunity. I got to find the right one. Where is it here? It was... Mr. Shore, be patient. I've got it right here somewhere.
It is the right one, though.
It was here. I've got it... Well, where did it go?
I think I saw...
Oh, here it is. This was submitted two years ago by Mr. Shore, and the proposed legislation read that legislation that mandates that all school-aged children of Texas state legislators be mandated to attend public schools. Great idea, except the Texas Association of School Boards shot it down.
Was it a little too radical?
In our board meetings in the state of Texas, yes.
Great idea.
So, Dr. Burns, does that bring us to Agenda Item Number Five?
I believe it does.
We're at comments from board members. Are there any comments from the board members? That brings us to Item Number Six, Closed Meeting, and we do not have any closed-meeting items tonight.
We do not.
Item Number Seven, we don't need a reconvene. We do have a few hours to spend at graduation this Sunday, so we will get to spend some quality time with each other, if any of y'all are feeling like you're missing out on a few. Ms. Chaffin, will you be joining us? See, we even get Ms. Chaffin. So at this time, that brings us to Agenda Item Number Eight, Adjournment. By my determination, we've reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 8:40 Time to move on.
I've seen you blossom.